Is now called to order. Requesting everyone to please stand for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Maria Lady Hope Makaira. After which, please remain standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem and the singing of the provincial hymn.
Let us put ourselves in the Holy Presence of God in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, Amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today. Bless this session with your wisdom, guidance, and peace. Grant us open minds to listen, discerning hearts to decide, and cooperative spirits to work together for the good of all. Be with us from the beginning to end, and let the outcome of this gathering be fruitful and meaningful. We entrust this session into your loving hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[Music] 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 [Music]
Good afternoon to all the members, distinguished members of this August body. Good afternoon also to our SP Support Services Office headed by our SP Secretary, Mr. Maximino Nazareno II. And of course, to the SP Support Services staff. And good afternoon also to our guest who is already inside the session hall, Ms. Enya Amahid. Our newly appointed provincial agriculturist. To our friends from media and to everyone inside the session hall, once again, good afternoon. So what is the next item? Please, Mr. Secretary, you may proceed with the roll call for the determination of the quorum.
May I request the members of this August body to say, "I, as I call the rule, Honorable Beverly M. Dyanan, Honorable Harold M. Montes, Honorable Manuel M. Lepardo Jr., Honorable Anna Chirrellen Castro, Honorable Elijah Paul E. Palmahill (Is On Official Business), Honorable Daoud V. Linsag, Honorable Stephen Paul L. Uy, Honorable Maria Lady Hope J. Makaira, Honorable John Erwin G. Montoho, Honorable Rochi M. Ravelo, Honorable Jerome C. Deanghirang (Is On Official Business), Honorable Joson Michael G. Deanghirang, Honorable Ilotero C. Malaitai, Honorable Janine C. Lindtugunan (Is On Official Business). Your Honor, we have 11 SP members in attendance, including the Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Considering that we have mastered the quorum for today's regular session, we can now proceed to the other items in the order of business. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Our next item is reading and consideration of the Minutes Journal of Proceedings of the 18th Sangunian Panilawigan of Dava Oriental during its 10th regular session held thus September 3, 2025, at the SP Session Hall Government Center, the Hican City of Mati, Dava Oriental.
I believe all members were furnished copies of the Minutes and Journal of Proceedings of the 10th Regular Session dated September 3, 2025. What is now the pleasure of the body? If there's no objection, if there's no corrections? Yes, Honorable Lepardo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. May you have upon sa atong tanan. Considering that the Honorable Elijah Palmahill is not around, I now bid for the approval of our Minutes of our September 2, 2025 regular session together with our journal. I do sumo.
There was a motion for the adoption and approval of the Minutes and Journal of Proceedings of the 10th Regular Session dated September 3, 2025. A motion of Honorable Lepardo. Okay, there was a motion presented, duly seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions, none noted, motion is carried, said the Minutes is hereby adopted and approved by this council. Okay, so what is the next item in the order of business?
Our next item is Privilege Hour.
Okay, we are now under Privilege R. Any other members? Yes, Honorable Dyanan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer. And to my fellow legislators, my friends in the media, and everyone in attendance, good afternoon to all of you. At this moment, I rise, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer, in a matter of a personal and collective privilege. And that is to express my utmost gratitude to our provincial political leaders and public officials headed by no less than our good governor, the Honorable Nelson L. Deanghirang, together with the two congressional district representatives, the Honorable Nelson R. Deanghirang Jr., and as well as the Honorable Chino Miguel Almario, together with the office of the good Senator Christopher Lawrence Bongo, and as well as the local executives of the five municipalities, the municipality of Catiil, Baganga, Tarragona, Banabanay, and San Isidro, and as well as Mati Siree, for extending their unwavering support for the education of our youth through a sponsorship of the scholarship for our beloved Dava Oriental State University, or DORSO. Likewise, my utmost gratitude also to the administration of DORSO headed by no less than the president, Dr. Roy Ponce, for having a very open mind and showing a compassion for the marginalized students of our province. Such support, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer, eases the burdens of parents and the families, and also give chance to our students to pursue their dreams. This scholarship sponsorship, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer, though this is free, but there are also fees that our students really want to be helped. For one, it's about the drug test that costs 700 pesos for each of them. For a marginalized student, 700 pesos is still significant for them. And so, Madam Presiding Officer, we in the Committee of Education headed by no less than our honorable board member Harold Montes wants to explore if such cost of 700 pesos for drug test could be put or could be availed through field health with prior registration under consulta package, either by the parents if the students are still minor, and/or if students' majority age, if they can avail themselves through direct registration to field help. And so, Madam Presiding Officer, it is also respectfully requested if we can invite field health official, any representative who can shed light if there is a possibility to that, wanting us to have the 700 be availed through a consulta package, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer.
Would that be all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Dyanan. There is a request by Honorable Dyanan to invite a representative head or the representative of our field health office in our next regular session. What is now the pleasure of the body? Is anybody, everybody in agreement to that request? If there is no objection, please, Mr. Secretary, please take note and prepare the necessary communication to be sent to our guests for the next regular session. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer.
So we are still under Privilege R. Do we have any other members who would like to avail of the Privilege R? Yes, Honorable Anna Chirrell Castro, you're raising your hand. You have the floor.
Good afternoon to everyone, to my colleagues, to our Presiding Officer, to our secretary, and everyone, the media, the employees and staff. I'd like to add on the board member Dyanan's statement earlier that since before we became board member, even when I was just counselor way back in 2007, up to now, before that, we, our congressman Nelson Boy Deanghirang, and now a governor, and so with the past leaders, like the former Governor Mam Cora Malanyon, and also District 2 Congressman Chino Almario, and also former Congressman Mayo Almario, they have been giving already assistance to DORSO, even we became a board member. This is just an additional statement that would Beverly, Board Member Beverly Dyanan, maybe she should know. Okay, and also, that's good, Bev, Board Member Dyanan. We will still ask for the, you have requested, and we will also talk to our, let our committee chairman, Honorable Harold Montes, follow it up. And also, I'd like also, Madam Presiding Officer, would like to congratulate our Governor Nelson Boy Deanghirang for the successful GNLD-BOC yesterday, the caravan in Barangay Batawan and Barangay Binundo. I'd like to congratulate and thanking our Governor Nelson Deanghirang and Congressman JR Deanghirang for that also. And I'd also like to greet our Vice Governor in advance. Happy, happy birthday, ma'am. That's all, Madam Presiding, and good afternoon to everyone.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Castro. Okay, we are still under Privilege R. Do we have other members who would like to avail of the Privilege R? Yes, Honorable Castro.
I also want to say thank you and congratulations also to our focal person, one of the focal person of the GNLD-BOC caravan yesterday, the Honorable Board Member Rochi Ravelo for being there yesterday in our caravan. Thank you, board.
Yes, thank you again, Honorable Castro. Yes, indeed, congratulations, Board Member Ravelo. It was successful. And there will be more barangays who will be availing of the NLDBOC services, no? The program that was initiated by our good Governor Nelson Deanghirang. So we are still under Privilege R. Do we have other members who would like to avail of the Privilege R? If none, we can now proceed to the next item in the order of business.
Our next item is Question Hour.
Okay, we are now under Question R. Do we have a guest? Do we have a guest for Question R? Yes, Honorable Lepardo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I think we have a guest. In fact, there will be two. The other one would join us later on. We have with us, I think, our newly appointed chief of our provincial agrarian agriculture, Pagro. For us to properly recognize him, I would be moving that we temporarily suspend our rules and allow the visitor to take the podium, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer.
Okay, there is a motion for the suspension of the House rules in order to accommodate our guest. A motion of Honorable Lepardo, seconded, seconded by all members present. Any objections? Discussions, none noted, motion is carried. We are now under suspended House rules. So may we request our guest, Ma'am Enya Amahid, to occupy the rostrum on the right side of the session hall? And we now give you the floor for your opening statement, ma'am.
My greetings and deep respect to our esteemed honorable members of this August body, especially with the Presiding Officer, the Honorable Vice Governor Glenda Rabatgaita. Good afternoon. Allow me to introduce myself. I am Enya Celoso Amahid. Celoso, Celosa lang, 56 years old and a resident of Mati. My mother hails from Caraga, my father from Iloilo, but because of the Norcamco in Baganga, way back in 1970s, mong nagkita sila. I graduated in 1988 with Bachelor of Science in Agriculture at the Ateneo de Davao University, and have been with DA for 36 years, but I started at the Provincial Agriculture Office under the leadership of then Provincial Agriculture Officer, the Shell Indelible, and availed of the lateral entry with DA, RFO 11, during the devolution in 1993. And it is my honor to be back home, to serve the populace of Dava Oriental, having this wide experience in research, in extension. Having this wide experience in research, in extension, in institutional development, I am honored to be a part and to work with you and to collaborate with other stakeholders. Thank you, good afternoon, Mam.
Thank you, Mam Amahit. I will now open the floor for any questions, clarifications, or statements from the members of this August body who would like to direct any questions to our guest, Honorable Montez, the Committee Chair on Education.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, good afternoon to each and everyone, especially sa tuang newly appointed Provincial Agricultureist, Miss Enya Si Amahit, no? I'm sure your experience in the office, especially from the first stage up until now, will bring more, especially on the part of agriculture, the province of Davao Oriental. We will be working hand in hand, especially on crafting legislation with regards to food security and all other related legislation, especially with regards to agriculture. And we hope that... So, once again, congratulations.
Thank you, Mam. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Harold Montez is also the Committee Chair on Labor and Employment, Labor and Employment, Civil Service, and Human Resource Development. So, other members of this council, we have our newly appointed Provincial Agricultureist here with us. Do you have any questions, clarifications? I think Mam Enya, I think everybody here is really welcoming you. We are, we feel so blessed that you have accepted the offer of our Governor to work with the province. And may I know, Mam, to what direction the Provincial Agriculture is going? What are the priority programs and projects that will be, that the Governor has in mind for the next six months first?
Do we have... Knowing that agriculture is the number two top agenda of the Governor, it is just but fit and proper that the Pagro will work hard in order to attain its mandate, which is food sufficiency and food production, especially on delivering the basic services and also extension development programs. And more so, giving emphasis on our main crop, which is coconut. In fact, we just have initially discussed about making it as our fruit symbol, the young coconut, and also giving emphasis on its role in our cultural heritage. Also, we have our top priority, which is the rice and corn, our high-value crops, vegetables, also our fisheries. These are the things that we want really to strengthen, together with our officials and also our workers from Pagro.
Thank you, Mam. I know for sure that the Governor has put agriculture in as one of the top priorities of his administration. But yes, I believe Honorable Manaitai is raising his hand, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. We are happy that Mam Amahit is now to be appointed as Agricultureist of the Provincial. And we're happy, and I think she has the experience of what Miadpi is. The tribe or the indigenous peoples of Davao Oriental is very eager to participate in program and a minimum inclusive agricultural development program. Because we know pretty well that the ancestral domain of Davao Oriental is about 60% titled and owned by the indigenous people. And we have really a worry on how could we develop a certain portion of land being awarded to the IPs without any resources? And we are very happy to know that Taragona is one of the recipient of Miadpi program from the Department of Agriculture. I hope that through the representation of Mam, our Provincial Government Department head in the name of Mam Enya Mahit, that he could perhaps facilitate or help the IPs to avail. Because we know, we believe that, before we believe that only one province could avail for one Miadpi, but according to Governor, there's no limitation. As long as perhaps you could afford, you can give the counterpart about 10%, then why not? And under the hope, I think, of the indigenous peoples that of course we could develop the land, because you know, there are a lot of intervention given by the government in terms of agriculture. But I think that's not enough, the resources of the province is not enough to develop a federal settlement, because we have a vast land for agriculture. We are dreaming to have also partners, not only the government, but other stakeholders that perhaps be a partner of the indigenous peoples to avail of a certain land. So that of course, and while we are protecting our forest lands of Davao Oriental by giving livelihood or intervention to the indigenous peoples of Davao Oriental. And that's all, Mam, and thank you, Mam, I hope that you could help us, you could help the people, indigenous peoples of Davao Oriental. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Manaitai, yes, Mam.
Being an IP myself, I would be working hard also to be able to fast-track whatever assistance that we can give for the IPs, especially with Miadpi, sir. And hopefully, it's not only Taragona that can avail of this, but also other areas of which our brothers and sisters, our IP brothers and sisters can avail of.
Okay, so I think Honorable Manaitai is smiling, I think he's satisfied with the answer. Because it's true, yes, the ancestral domain, the area is so vast and there is really a need for intervention with the government as there's lacking in the resources, logistics for that. So, with you at the helm of the Provincial Agriculture Office, perhaps you can come up with more programs that will include assistance and partnerships and collaboration with the IP communities too. So, yes, do we have other members? Yes, Honorable Roche Ravilo, to be followed later by Honorable Dyanan.
Good afternoon, thank you, Honorable Vice Governor, the Honorable Vice Governor Glenda Rabatgaita, Sanggung ng panawigan, our bull SP secretary and staff, guest, friends from the media, of course, our source person, the newly appointed Provincial Agricultureist Mam Enya Celoso Amahit. So, I'm very happy, imunggi tubag ang panawagan. I answered the call of the Provincial Government sa service for the province, especially in agriculture and fisheries sector. So, for, just to give an information to my honorable colleagues, I have worked well with Mam Enya because she was with the Regional Office of the Department of Agriculture, especially the cars. So, as a person, I know her to be that religious, faithful to almost all things, no? And also a hard-working and then intelligent person. And as to her professional career, she served the Department of Agriculture that well. In fact, she is a valued personnel, human resource of the Department of Agriculture. And given her experience, I am assured that the agriculture sector, especially our farmers and fisher folk and our drive to combat poverty and also improving food production in relations to food security, driving our agriculture sector for better entrepreneurship opportunities and thus providing jobs to our people and including, of course, the marginalized, as mentioned by our IP representative, the Honorable Manaitai, be included in the planning since we're both IP, members of the IP, and also the household efforts in coming, producing food in the urban areas like Mati City and the population areas of each of the municipalities. So, and also institutionalizing and operationalizing, making it profitable our government facilities like the farmer's mall. I believe those are things that will really be your focus in the coming days, no? Especially that budget season is fast approaching, I hope all of those will be included. Again, I am happy to welcome you to the Provincial Government, especially in our family in the Agriculture Office, and God bless. Congratulations, Mam Enya.
Thank you, Board Member Ravilo. Okay, thank you, Honorable Ravilo, yes, Honorable Dyanan, you now have the floor. Thank you, Madam Honorable Presiding Officer, and welcome, Mam Enya, to Pagro.
Thank you, Mam.
I'm sure your appointment is a well-deserved one, that comes with a hope that that appointment could contribute greatly to the objective of the province, especially to the number two agenda of our good Governor Nelson Erdayang Hirang. This is just a rejoinder with the question of our Vice Governor a while ago about your priority crops, no, intended. I'm happy that still you prioritize planting coconut over any other plants or trees, no? As you know, we in the Oriental, Davao Oriental, we used to be the number one producer of coconut. And if we are not by this time, it's really worth pursuing, getting it again, you know? Because looking around, there's still a lot of lands that are empty, idle, sayang ba. But this coconut is one of our centennial crop, no, that would reach 100 years. I just wonder, for 50, 50 years crop, do you also look into that? Centennial, half-year, says coffee, cacao, or what have you, is that part of your priorities?
Yes, Mam, because we cannot just rely on monocropping. There's a need for us to diversify. And it's also important to put something that they can harvest, short duration, like cash crops. We mean that vegetables and also perennial crops. While waiting for cacao or coffee to bear fruit, then we can harvest vegetables and other, what's this, field crops like peanut, mango.
Yes, and that if we can advocate for intercropping to maximize the strength of our lands. And you know, talking about cacao and coffee, internationally, the demand is really very high. So, it's really be good if we can position ourselves to also put efforts on those crops. What about cash crops? What's our priorities? Of course, like if I may say, rice, rice, coconut, oh no, rice, corns? What about cassava with also very high demand? Corn also as well, especially the yellow one. And what about sugarcane? This I'm mentioning, because if we want to create a province that is self-contained, self-sufficient, especially on food security, then we have to be holistic in looking at it. So, not just coconut, but I really appreciate you mentioned specifically coconut and not the palm tree. Because that's really is ours, coconut is ours, whereas palm tree is not endemic to our environment. And allowing palm tree would, it would disrupt, it would alter our biodiversity, which we really have to protect. So, that's all, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you, Mam. Thank you, Honorable Dyanan.
We know, we know that food is everybody's concern. And prioritizing field crops, cereals, that would be, that would be a very good direction, especially in combating our poverty incidence, which is 38%. And we know that we cannot do that alone, but with the help of the different stakeholders, and most especially to our honorable legislators. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The floor is still open, yes, Honorable Makira, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Good afternoon, Mam. I would also like to congratulate you on your appointment, Mam, considering that you have been in government service for quite some time and I also know that you are familiar with the needs of our province, especially that our Davao Oriental is highly agricultural. In fact, most of us rely on agricultural products and that ay, with the sangguniang panalawigan, fully support the program, for the programs, projects, and activities that the Pagro intends for the province. Also, Mam, I would just like to ask, earlier, Board Dyanan mentioned about the cacao and the coffee products. Now, the trend is that cacao has gained attention internationally and also coffee. I have noticed that there have been rising coffee shops or coffee, mini coffee shops in the province, and they are importing beans from other provinces. Is there any program for our province for the coffee beans or the coffee producers?
There is a need for us to really know the bulk of our production inside the provincial, the province, because we know that a lot has been planting coffee. It's just that they don't get much attention. With my leadership, we will be getting benchmark data and how we can help them, especially in planting materials, processing, and giving them incentives for planting coffee.
Yes, Mam, thank you, and also there, in Karaga, in your hometown, also there has been Coffee Farmers Association that has been established, also asking for the support of the province. That will be all, thank you.
Thank you, Mam.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Makira. Yes, Honorable Dinsag, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Governor Mam Glenda Rabatgaita, good afternoon to each and everyone. Mam, congratulations. Welcome to the Provincial Government, la bina mam sa Pagro. Kaidati mam, ang headya sa Pagro, diri pa board members Roche Ravilo, no? Nami mga request diya. No, nami mga request diya. Nami request diya na mga siblings sa manga, mga lubidikin siya mo hatad. I hope, ma'am, na ikaw na, hindi mo nagminggahin ang tanong ay basta mo request ko. Okay? Mo request, kinaaman tay mga consistent, kinahanglan board, mga marayk ba na may mga lubida, no? I'm just joking, kita, ma'am. So, ma'am, once again, ma'am, congratulations for your new career, no? Na ang Sanggunian Pandalawigan under the head chief of Vice Governor Glenn Rabat Gaita, no? Tanong ay good welcome. Say mo hanga matawag na tong maayong panlantaw. Dina say mo nga bagong, matawag na tong bagong pamilya, no? Once again, ma'am, good luck. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. With regards to, can I, yes? With regards to the planting materials, and piyong piyong na si Sir Ravelo. We know that part of the planting materials are being raised for income-generating project of the province. But this might also be considered na tagaan ug libre ang mga gusto mo tanong. We will look into that because we were planning, we are planning, I mean, to come up with a site development plan of that area there in, at the back of the Provincial Health Office because that area is part of the 10 hectares that was donated by Mense Hans to the provincial government way back in 1970s. Seventy-five, I mean, 1975, during the time of then-Governor Chodoro Palmahil. I am familiar with this, ma'am, because I was working then with a research out of station. Kung di in, ko nagoffice, kung asa ko nagoffice before, that was the only office that was retained after the devolution, the national office that was retained because all facilities, like the Artificial Breeding Center, was transferred to the local government unit. And so coming up with a site development plan would maximize the resources of the provincial government. And we would like to level up in terms of being the source of quality planting materials. One step of that is to plant quality foundation trees because that would mean the Bureau of Plant Industry will accredit that as a certified source of planting materials. And this will enhance our capability to produce a sexually propagated siblings and expand the production area of our interested producers. Makakuha na guyud ka, sir, of planting materials. Although nasayud ming mahinungdanan ang income-generating project, pero tanawon podnamo ang kamahinungdanan nga makaabil ang tanan. Ilabinak atong naasama cluster areas to plant. This will inspire them to really produce para dili na sila maging idle. Because we know that we have a lot of idle lands and we just have to give interventions and teach them the appropriate technologies. And perhaps one day, we'll be able to make them entrepreneurs, corporate producers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma'am Enya. Are there any other members who would like? Yes, Honorable Montez, you were raising your hand. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Ma'am, once again, congratulations. And I'm sure that all the members of this chamber is 100%, supportive para sa imuhang konkorens as Pagro Chief. So once again, congratulations. And with that, I would like to manifest for the inclusion of Committee Report Number 18-48-2025 along with its corresponding proposed resolution 84-2025 under the Committee on Labor and Employment, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, may I just inquire? Is it 18-49 or 48? Forty-nine, okay. So there is a manifestation by Honorable Montez for the inclusion of Committee Report Number 18-49-2024 in the Order of Business today. Are there any objections to the request? None noted. Mr. Secretary, please take note. So are we through with all the questions, queries, and statements for our guests? So, ma'am, in behalf of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan, we congratulate you for your new appointment. And we are all looking forward, we're all excited, looking forward. We know that our, the Provincial Agriculture Office is in good hands with you at the helm of its leadership and knowing full well that the Governor has put agriculture on top of, on the top-two priority in the 10-point agenda of the province. So earlier, before the start of the session, I had a very good discussion with Ma'am Enya. Medyo hindi ko nalang ibring up yun, ma'am, kaya medyo mahaba-habang usapan. There will be another venue when we get to sit down with our provincial agriculturists so that we can just do some exploratory discussions on what we need to do to be able to collaborate and help each other for the good of the province. So, ma'am, once again, congratulations and thank you for your appearance today.
Thank you very much. My deep gratitude to all of you.
So we are still under question R. Do we have other guests?
Supposedly, Honorable Presiding Officer, we still have our provincial legal officer in the person of Attorney Armand Josso, but I think he is still on his way to the Sanggunian Pandalawigan. So as not to delay our session today, as he arrives, I would just make the necessary motion that we acknowledge him and go back to this part under suspended rule so that we can also hear Attorney Josso. Meantime, I will be moving that we lift now the suspension of the rules and then go back to our regular session.
There was a motion for the lifting of the suspension of House rules on motion of Honorable Lepardo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions? None noted. Motion is carried. If there is, if there is no objection, the Chair would like to declare a few minutes recess. Just one minute recess. By the time of a pick. R, and we are now back. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary, in the Order of Business?
Our next item is referral to Committees of Proposed Resolutions and Proposed Ordinances. We have here Proposed Resolution Number 18-82-2025, which is authored by the Honorable Vice Governor Maria Glenna Monet Rabat Gaita.
This is referred to Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation.
Our next item is Communication Number 18-93-2025.
This is for the information of this August body.
Communication Number 18-94-2025.
This is referred to the Committee on Environment and Natural Resources.
Communication Number 18-95-2025.
This is also for the information of this August body, particularly Committee on Energy, Public Works, and Highways and Infrastructure Development.
Communication Number 18-96-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Communication Number 18-97-2025.
This is referred to Committee on Housing, Rural and Urban Development.
Communication Number 18-98-2025.
This is for the information of this August body.
Communication Number 18-99-2025.
This is also for the information of this August body.
Our next item is Committee Report Number 18-48-2025.
Honorable Rochi Ravelo, for the Committee Report Number 18-46-2025.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, the Honorable Vice Governor Glenn Rabat Gaita, members of this council. I have here Committee Report Number 18-46-2025, Communications Number 18-06-2025, a pre-reviewed appropriation ordinance Number 2-23-2025, calendar year 2025, general fund supplemental budget, Number 2 of the Municipality of Catiil. Since all members of this August body is a copy of this Committee Report, I move to dispense with the reading of the whole content of this Committee Report and subsequently move for its adoption. I so move.
There was a motion presented by Honorable Rochi Ravelo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions? None noted. Committee Report Number 18-46-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next item.
Our next item is Committee Report Number 18-47-2025 by Committee on Cooperative POs, NGOs, CISOs, and Livelihood.
We'll render the report. Honorable Daud Dinsag, you are recognized.
Thank you once again, Madam Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to each and everyone. Committee Report Number 18-47-2025, filed by Committee on Cooperative POs, NGOs, CISOs, and Livelihood. Subject: Communication Number 18-6O-2025. Action taken in the committee here, the meeting on September 3, 2025, at the Sanggunian Pandalawigan Session Hall to act and deliberate. The her and subject referred communication present is the presentation the Chairman of this Committee. He is truly the Vice Chairman of the Committee, Honorable Ravelo. And the members of the Committee also present, Honorable Harul Montez. And on official business, official business, the Board Member Ling Tugunan and Board Member Makaira. Honorable Madam Presiding Officer, the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood has acted and deliberated. The her and subject referred communication Number 18-6O-2025 from Mr. Edgar B. Solis, President of Subang Foundation Incorporated, dated August 14, 2025. Madam Presiding Officer, since all the members from this August body have already a copy, I move to dispense the reading of contents of this Committee Report Number 18-47-2025 and subsequently move for the adoption. I do so move, Madam Chair. Thank you.
There was a motion presented by Honorable Daud Dinsag for the adoption of Committee Report Number 18-47-2025. Any objections, discussions? None noted. Said Committee Report Number 18-47-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next item.
Next item is Committee Report Number 18-48-2025 by Committee on Rules, Privileges, Laws, Ordinances, and Legal Matters.
Honorable Lepardo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report Number 18-48-2025 in relation to Communication Number 17-1287-2025 of the letter of Ms. Fatimael Malwan, S.B. Secretary of the Municipality of Lupon, Dava Oriental, in relation to the quote-unquote revising and updating the code of general ordinances of the Municipality of Lupon, Dava Oriental. The copy of this Committee Report, Honorable Presiding Officer, were already given to each and every member of this August body and would hence request that I forego the reading of the findings and recommendations and would go for the acceptance of our Committee Report. I do so move for the acceptance of such report, Honorable Presiding Officer.
There was a motion for the adoption and acceptance of Committee Report Number 18-48-2025 on motion of Honorable Lepardo, seconded by all members present. Any objections, discussions? None noted. Motion is carried. Committee Report Number 18-48-2025 is hereby adopted by this council.
Honorable Presiding Officer, Attorney Armand Josso, our newly-appointed provincial legal officer is already with us.
And if I may be allowed, as I have already made the reservation earlier, can we go back to the calendar on question hour under suspended rules so that we can appropriately recognize Attorney Josso?
Okay. If there is no objection from the members, in order to accommodate our guest, was there already a motion for the suspension of the House rules? Honorable Lepardo? Was there already a motion? There was a motion for the suspension of House rules as presented earlier by Honorable Lepardo, seconded by all members present. Any objections? Discussions? None noted? Motion is carried. House rules are hereby suspended. We will now give the floor to Attorney Armand Josso. You can occupy the rostrum on the right side and we give you the floor for the opening statement, sir.
Good afternoon to the honorable members and Chairman of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan of the Province of Dava Oriental. I am Attorney Armand B. Josso, appointed as a provincial legal officer of the Province of Dava Oriental. I am a resident of Lupun, Dava Oriental. Been practiced law for 17 years. I have been appointed in government position since 2010 as clerk of court of regional trial court, brancher to Lupun, Dava Oriental, assistant provincial prosecutor to of the office of the provincial prosecutor, Dava Oriental, since year 2016 until 2019. Appointed as regional director of the Land Transportation Franchising and Regulatory Board, RFO 11, from 2019 to 2020, and executive director of the Land Transportation Franchising and Regulatory Board from January 2021 to March 2021. I have been in practice since then until the appointment of our distinguished Honorable Governor Nelson Baydyang Hirang III. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney. The floor is now open for any questions, clarifications coming from the members of this council. Yes, Honorable Lepardo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Supposedly, I will not be asking question, but Attorney Maria Makaira has requested me to ask two few questions. Or one question where there are two... Attorney Makaira, Attorney Josso Paniero.
May I have one?
You have a very colorful background as far as your legal practice is concerned. But I really would not like to ask this, but considering Attorney Makaira told me so, she was asking what is your favorite color? Because she always sees you in a blue suit.
Unfortunately, I just came from Dava. I was not able to...
Actually, na payo sa Attorney, what is your favorite song, Budota? Attorney, on a more serious note, Attorney Josso, sir, you're joining the family of Governor Nelson Dayang Hirang in the province as our provincial legal officer could not have come at this time when we have a lot of things to do, ranging from the contracts that were terminated headed by Attorney Makaira when he was still in the capitolio, to the unpaid taxes of certain mining companies who have operated in the province. And I think until now, the same has not yet been paid, to the direction by which the governor would like the province to go through, with all of the things that we have, the RECO and all of those things. So mine is saying good luck to you on all of these things and in whatever or whichever way we can help here in the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, I would like to think, I myself would say that you can count on me and would like to think that Attorney Makaira will also have your back and you can also count on her, in spite of her being the head of the terminating of contracts of the previous administration. So that would be my message to you, Attorney Josso, and thank you for joining Governor Dayang Hirang in his term. Congratulations.
Thank you, Honorable Board, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Lepardo. Are there any other members? Yes, Honorable Ravelo?
This is not a question like him from a lawyer attorney. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. To our resource person, Attorney Josso, congratulations on your appointment and welcome to the official family of the provincial government of Dava Oriental led by Governor Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Honorable Board, sir. Thank you.
Of course, we are all aware that you can give really a good support to the provincial government, especially to the governor, being in practice for so many years. But I don't know if this is a right question to ask or because I am just concerned about my good friend, si Board Daud. Kuan mang good Attorney, kung ikaw ang provincial legal officer, pwede ba daw kamu... Karo lang siya nag-ingon sa kuwan, nagpakita siya ug papilikan sa umbudsman ba? Nakadawa siya ug sulat sa umbudsman. In the exercise of the function of any of the board members... Di lang siya kapangutan na maulo siya Attorney ba? Kaya nalagay siya yung letter from the umbudsman. Kung naabay kaso, in the exercise of the function of the board member like him, pwede raba daw na moduol sa imuhang Attorney?
As far as the representation of the provincial legal officer, sir, we cannot represent public officials in cases involving... cases before the umbudsman.
Ay, muhang good ka, Pritha, Daud.
Even in exercise of duty.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney. Again, congratulations.
Thank you, Honorable Board, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Rochi Ravelo. The floor is still open for any... Yes, Honorable Makaira, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Attorney Josso, good afternoon.
Good morning, Board.
Earlier, the question was Attorney Lepardo asked you, what is your favorite color? I think he was mistaken. The question should have been, what is the favorite color of your wife? Because he always wear color blue, Attorney Josso. In fact, it's very memorable because Attorney Josso, when he was still a fiscal, he was my first prosecutor in the courtroom when I was still with the public attorney's office and he was still with the provincial prosecutor's office with the Lupun District Office. So that should have been a question. And I would like to also congratulate you, Attorney Josso. You really have a wide experience when it comes to not only litigation but to legal practice in particular. So I wish you all the best. And also, can I ask, because you did not answer the question of Attorney Lepardo, what is your favorite song?
Thank you, Honorable Madam Sir. I will ask my favorite color, although I'm wearing blue, but we are now yellow. As to my favorite song, Umaro Umulan.
I thought it was Lucky Salayaw, fiscal... Attorney Josso?
So thank you, Honorable Makaira. Are there other members who would like to... Would like to ask our... Yes, Honorable Montez?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to our provincial legal officer, Attorney Josso.
Good afternoon, Board, sir.
Congratulations sa imuhang appointment. I'm sure siliganta tagalupun and I'm sure nakakatabang sa probinsya, especially nining atuang mga legal matters sa tuwang probinsya. Most especially, representation on every municipality, especially those municipalities na wala'y legal officer.
Yes.
So once again, congratulations. And I guess, all the members of this chamber support on your concurrence, then I would like to manifest for the inclusion of the Committee Report number still, 18-49-2025, along with its corresponding proposed resolution, 18-83, for the concurrence of Attorney Josso. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Montez. There is a request by Honorable Montez. If there is no objection to the said request, Committee Report number 18-49-2025 has already been included, as earlier manifested by Honorable Board Member Montez, and its corresponding resolution be also included in the Order of Business. So if there are no other questions... Yes, Honorable Lepardo, you have...
I would have moved for the...
Oh, yes. So before I give the floor to you, in behalf of Attorney Josso, in behalf of the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, I would like to congratulate you for your appointment as the provincial legal officer of the Province of Dava Oriental. And we are looking forward... We know that with your vast experience, as earlier mentioned, I think the governor did not make a mistake in inviting you to be part of the family of the provincial government. And as also, the Sangguniang, one of our mandate is to craft laws. So very important po 'yung collaboration ng Sangguniang with your office, as there will be lots of legal opinions... Well, of course, we have two lawyers here, but there will be more collaboration and coordination with your office from, of course, the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, sir. So again, congratulations and welcome to the Province of Dava Oriental, sir.
Thank you, Vice Governor.
If there's no objection, we can have a photo opportunity with our newly-appointed provincial legal officer, Attorney Armand Josso. Would that be okay? During recess, right? So if there's objection, the Chair would like to declare a few minutes recess.
There's suspended rules and we'll so move that we lift the same and go back to our regular session.
Okay, there was a motion for the lifting of the suspension of the House rules. On motion of Honorable Lepardo, seconded by all members present. Any objections? Discussions? None noted? Motion is carried. What is the next item?
Our next item, Madam Presiding Officer, is Committee Report number 18-49-2025. Be unable to employ.
Honorable Montez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have here Committee Report number 18-49-2025, dated September 9, 2025, with subject communications number 18-70-2025 and 18-91-2025. It is a letter from the Honorable Governor Nelson Elde Yangirang, addressed to the honorable members through Vice Governor Maria Glenda Monet Rabat Gaita, respectfully forwarding the appointment of Attorney Armand Josso and Ms. Enya C. Amahet as provincial government department heads under the provincial legal office and provincial agricultureist office this province respectively, both for the concurrence by this August body. Action taken, the committee held a meeting on September 3, 2025, at SP Session Hall right after the regular session to discuss the referred subject communication. Present, this representation as chairman and the rest of the members of the committee. Findings. Number one, the appointment of Attorney Armand B. Josso was duly signed by the Honorable Governor on August 20, 2025. The appointment of Ms. Enya C. Amahet was duly signed by the Governor on August 25, 2025. Number three, both appointees possess all the necessary qualifications and eligibility required for the positions and none of the disqualifications thereof. And for recommendation, this honorable committee hereby recommends the passage of resolution concurring the appointment of Attorney Armand B. Josso as provincial department head under the legal office effective August 20, 2025, and Ms. Enya C. Amahet as provincial government department head under the provincial agricultureist office effective August 25, 2025. Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of Committee Report number 18-49-2025.
There was a motion for the adoption of Committee Report number 18-49-2025 and motion of Honorable Montez, seconded by all members present. Any objections? Discussions? None noted? Motion is carried. Committee Report number 18-49-2025 is hereby adopted by this council. Next item?
Our next item is calendar of business. Under calendar of business is proposed resolutions. We have here proposed resolution number 18-79-2025. Sponsored, the Honorable Ravelo.
Honorable Ravelo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, the Honorable Secretary. I have here proposed resolution numbers 18-79-2025, a resolution declaring the appropriation ordinance number 2-23-06-2025 of the Municipality of Cati Il, Dava Oriental operative in its entirety. Whereas appropriation ordinance number 02-23-06-2025 of the Municipality of Cati Il, Dava Oriental authorizing its calendar year 2025 general fund supplemental budget number 2 involving an appropriation of 11,448,584 pesos was submitted to this Sangguniang for review on July 3, 2025. was submitted to the Sangguniang for review on July 3, 2025 pursuant to the provisions of Republic Act 7160. Whereas the subject appropriation ordinance shows substantial compliance with the same law and its implementing rules and regulations. Resolve further to declare appropriation ordinance number 02-2023-06-2025 of the municipality of Katil Dava Oriental operative in its entirety as of its stated effectiveness date subject to the posting requirements under section 59 of Republic Act 7160. Honorable Presiding Officer, honorable colleagues, I move to pass and for the approval of this resolution number 18-79-2025. I so move.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-79-2025 on motion of Honorable Rochi Ravelo, seconded by all present. Any objections? Discussions? Non-noted? Motion is carried. Resolution number 18-79-2025 is hereby approved by this council. Next item.
Our next item is proposed resolution number 18-80-2025. Author and sponsor, Honorable Daud Bilin Sag.
Honorable Bilin Sag, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Proposed resolution number 18-80-2025. Author and sponsor this presentation, the chairman of this committee, a resolution granting accreditation to Subang Foundation Incorporated with office address to Porok Townsite Barangay Poblacion Municipality of Lupon, Dava Oriental. Considering that the same satisfactorily complied all the requirements set forth for accreditation pursuant to DILG memorandum circular number 2025-060 and provincial ordinance number 14-01-02-2014 as amended by provincial ordinance number 17-01-08-2022. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution number 18-80-2025. I do so move for the approval, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-80-2025 on motion of Honorable Bilin Sag, seconded by all present. Any objections? Discussions? Non-noted? Motion is carried. Resolution number 18-80-2025 is hereby approved by this council. Next item.
Next item is proposed resolution number 18-81-2025. Author and sponsor, Honorable Manuel M. Lepardo Jr.
Honorable Lepardo.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. This is proposed resolution number 18-81 series of 2025 entitled "A Resolution Confirming the Validity of Municipal Ordinance 2025-02" of the Sangguniang Bayan of Lupon, Dava Oriental entitled "Revising and Updating the Code of General Ordinances of the Municipality of Lupon, Dava Oriental Subject to the Provisions of Republic Act 7160 and Other Applicable Laws Relative thereto." May I therefore request that I forego the reading of the necessary veraces considering that the copy of this proposed resolution was already given to all members of this August body and would move for the approval of the proposed resolution number 18-81-2025. I do so move.
Okay, there was a motion for the passage of resolution number 18-81-2025 on motion of Honorable Lepardo, seconded by all members present. Any objections? Discussions? Non-noted? Motion is carried. Resolution number 18-81-2025 is hereby approved by this council. Next item.
Our next item, the Honorable Montez will be sponsoring two proposed resolutions. Author, namely, proposed resolution number 18-83, proposed resolution number 18-84, all series of 2025.
Honorable Montez.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I have two proposed resolution. Resolution number 18-23-2025. It is a resolution concurring the appointment of Attorney Armando B. Joso as provincial government head under the provincial legal office this province effective August 20, 2025 pursuant to section 463D of the Local Government Code of 1991. And proposed resolution number 18-84-2025, a resolution concurring the appointment of Miss Enya C. Amahet as provincial government department head under the provincial agriculturist office this province effective August 25, 2025 pursuant to section 460D of the Local Government Code of 1991. Madam Chair, I move for these two proposed resolution under omnibus motion.
Okay, there was passage, there was a motion for the passage of two resolutions. Resolution number 18-83-2025 and resolution number 18-84-2025 on motion of Honorable Montez, seconded by, seconded by Honorable Ravelo, Honorable Montoho and Honorable Dayanan. Any objections? Discussions? Non-noted? Motion is carried. Said resolutions are hereby approved by this council. Next item.
Next item, proposed ordinances and unassigned business. There are no unassigned business or proposed resolutions.
Yes, Honorable Ravelo, you were raising your hand. You have the floor. Okay, if there's no objection from the members, a few minutes recess is declared. We are now under unassigned business. We have no other measures for discussion. So you may proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, Your Honor, our next is item is proposed ordinances for third and final reading. There are no proposed ordinances as of now. And our next item is other matters.
We are now under other matters. Yes, Honorable Montez.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I would like to request the members of the Committee on Labor, Employment, Civil Service and Human Resource Development that we will have a committee meeting right after the session with regards to the referred communication earlier. Thank you.
Okay, the members of the said committee, please take note, there will be a meeting after this regular session. We are still under other matters. Yes, Honorable Rochi Ravelo.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I'd like to, to the honorable members of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation, I'd like to request your presence immediately after the session for a short meeting with regards to all referred communications under our committee. Thank you.
Okay, please take note, members of the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriation and Ways and Means, there will also be a meeting after this regular session. Other members? Are there other members for your... Yes, Honorable Lepardo.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Relative to communication number 18-94-2025, may I request the members of the Committee on Environment to stay after the session so that we can discuss the communication, this communication of the governor. Thank you.
Okay, please take note, members of the Committee on Environment, we'll have a meeting after this regular session. We are still under other matters. We don't have any more announcements or for any committee reports, we can proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
Our next item is adjournment.
Okay, for adjournment. There was a motion for the adjournment of this regular session until next Wednesday, 2:00 p.m. On motion of Honorable Lepardo, seconded by all present. Any objections? Discussions? Non-noted? Motion is carried. Session is hereby adjourned.